Dubwabs, hey, I just, what's up everybody? Hey, good to see you guys. I just watched you on TikTok. Is that really you in that video talking about the price of food and stuff? Keeping the swine in line, how are ya? Liberty Blair, how you be? Haven't seen you in a long time. I hate bullies. Bohika, how are you? So, hey, everybody, we're here tonight with Luis Johnson from the Real Constitutional Upholders Channel. You've seen some of his videos here over in Inglewood with his interactions with the popo. And so he's coming tonight. He wanted to start giving some public comment, putting things on the record, right? Stay in public like we do. So there he is. What's up, my friend, looking all sharp?
Appreciate that. It's going, it's going, you know, another day, so.
It is. So, um, he's got some ongoing cases.
Unfortunately.
That he's probably not gonna be talking much about because there's no reason to, really, right?
No.
You guys, it's, uh, it's deep. Inglewood, once again, picked the wrong guy to bully. And so they'll be taken to task. These things just take time. So we're just kinda gathering here tonight and we see the city council isn't here in full force. So half of them are gone, not half, but they still have a quorum. The four here, Rita Russell, Tina Prang, Kim Wright, and our good buddy from the Steven Joe Show, Joe Anderson is playing mayor tonight. Stacy, how are ya? So yeah, I haven't been on here in a while. We're not gonna have a lot in this chat, but that's okay. So if you can't hear the audio here, because remember I have to stand in the back of the room because those are the rules, and I'm not gonna push that rule yet. So you can go to their channel as well. City of Inglewood. You've been missing me a while. Lots going on, you know, and there's gonna be a lot more going on. So I'm probably not gonna be much of a presence on YouTube since I gotta do life. And the political climate right now, holy smokes. What does everybody think of 2025 so far? Whoa. Liberty Blair. You'd rather hear my voice? Yeah. I just think it's good to put things on the record here. You know, keeping it public and all. Irish Rover, yes, I know your thoughts of 2025. We just pop our popcorn pretty much on the daily. Things in Denver are pretty crazy. Ain't gonna lie. And I don't know what's gonna be left of it by the end of the year, but maybe same old, same old, maybe nothing. Bochamo, glad you're in here, how you doing? So I think I'm gonna leave this right here while I go take a quick break before we say the pledge of allegiance for liberty and justice for all.
I like how you emphasize, yeah.
For all. So I'm gonna leave the camera right here and why don't you chat with people? Luis can come over here and introduce himself and plug his channel, you know, right here to bring up the live chat, okay? So sometimes it disappears.
You know, I've never been live on my channel.
I know, he's never been live, he's practicing online. He's gonna be there soon, hopefully, because his channel really took off well. But life got busy for him too. But if that chat goes away, just tap, tap that, tap live chat.
Cool.
So yeah, listen to his story, and if they have any questions, they can ask. Can I read this right here?
Yeah. I know, I gotta get that LinkedIn there. Passionate about this right here. Super passionate. So just, you know, if you search up TRCU, you should find it, pretty easy. Let me see if I can do it. There you go. Appreciate the sub. Yeah, we're getting super good, good people. I would say that's one of the reasons why I would even do public comment in the first place. I hate bullies, yeah, I've noticed you on a couple of videos. I appreciate that. Anderson, who was harassed for doing open carry, I sure was. I would say more than harassed at that point, I mean. I appreciate that. Hate bullies. I hate bullies too. Bullies seems like I'm running into them though, for some reason.
Our good buddy Josh is here tonight too. He was recording an interaction with the police this week with a well-known homeless woman. I was proud that he was doing that. Always record the popo. If you see something, record something.
Always.
So yeah, I'll put a few more things on the record tonight. Yeah, I don't know why it does that.
We gotta talk about that ticket too, in a later live, about the Shango, or Shango ticket, remember the no front plate and?
Uh huh. Okay. Shangalo no-go, he's a cop here in Inglewood, he's no good. That's why I call him no-go. Shangalo no-go. They've hemmed him up with so much, I'm not even gonna, I'm not even gonna tell his story because he's gonna tell his story when the time is right. But I'm just proud of this young guy too for standing strong and not letting the system railroad him, not without a fight. I mean, ultimately in the end, what do we win? Change? No. But. I don't know, if you ain't gonna, if you ain't gonna exercise them, you're gonna lose them. And here I got the chief coming. And going.
What's going on, man?
How's it going, Josh?
Nice to meet you.
Say hello to everybody.
Hello, everybody, I'm a devil's advocate today.
I like it.
So used to seeing you on camera, you know?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Josh, tyranny in blue. If you haven't subbed to Josh's channel, make sure you sub to it. Tyranny in blue.
Yeah, tomorrow DMA and I are gonna be at the police station.
Oh.
I have a, because the same officer that put his hands on me, factored arrest, uh.
Hume?
He hit him with the door.
David Hume?
Hume, yep. Time to make that complaint. He had to open his big mouth. Oh, really? Well, it's now it's away from me.
Not that time.
Yeah. Yeah, the Inglewood PD, they're getting away with a lot of stuff that not even Denver would get away with, you know? Except there's just nobody watching them. So the other day, I gotta tell you this quick story. The other day, I'm driving through this parking lot in Inglewood, and there's, there's two cop cars parked. And they're just sitting there, backed into a space like they're scamming the whole parking lot. Private property, by the way. And they're just sitting there, sitting there, 10 minutes goes by, another one drives up and joins them, just sitting there. Mind you, it's 5:30 on a Friday night, nothing else to do, right? I mean, why shouldn't half of the department be parked in a parking lot on private property, just hanging out? Pretty soon, here comes a fourth one. And they're all parked, just hanging out. I'm thinking something really scary is about to go down. They're gonna bust somebody, I mean, they are out here in the wide open. I mean, it's not like they are in hiding, so what could be so scary that's gonna go down? Well, let's wait and find out. Well, lo and behold, five minutes later, or so, here comes a, a drink company, a wrap, a wrapped drink truck. Uh, what the heck was the name of these energy drinks? Something new, I don't know, something new in the gas stations, comes pulling up, opens up their vehicle, and all the cops start coming loading, unloading cases of energy drinks. I shit you not, and then it gets even better. Here comes the chief. He, he don't like me. We don't like each other. It's because he's worthless. That's why, that's why I don't like him. And he don't like me because he thinks it's gonna behoove him to, um, talk shit about me. But that's fine, you talk all the shit you want, buddy, that's fine, you can talk all the shit you want. So they unload all these energy drinks. And then they all kinda split off in different directions, like they're coming up on, into something. And they park, and they get out, and they go, literally, I watched it, recorded it. They go harass these two kids sitting in a minivan. Apparently, uh, the kid had an expired temp tag on the back of his, you know, uh, vehicle, on private property in a great big shopping center. So they go harass the shit out of these kids so they can justify their existence for having sat there for 30 minutes waiting for an energy drink delivery. I shit you not, that, that, and that's the stuff, that is a leadership problem. That's from the top down. They do it because they get away with it, and nobody gives a shit, so they do it. So the things that this department does, Denver, not in a million years would they get away with it. They just wouldn't, wouldn't happen. So I think we're probably about to start this meeting. Here comes Sean Lewis, the city manager, doing his powwowing, smiling all pretty. Oh, we're so glad you're here for your award, and know that the rules are no clapping. No clapping is allowed. All right, y'all, you ready to maybe just head in? No, you were actually supposed to go first. I left that line for you to go first.
No, no, that's fine.
You don't wanna go first?
I gotta watch her go first.
No booing, clapping, yelling, speaking off mic, or speaking in response to or doing a speaker's comments, so.
I bet you anything that you tell us to clap today.
No clapping, Josh. This is the no-clapping zone.
Isn't it, is it obstruction if you don't clap when you tell us to?
It's the no-clapping zone. So what awards are we doing here? Oh, it's the Inglewood Holiday Store. This big political shindig. And then public comment, yeah, and then we'll be out of here, so we won't be staying too long. Let's see what goes down, I don't know. Oh, hi. Oh, it's so lovely to see you this evening. Thank you for coming out and patting me on the back. I'm a hero. I'm a big hero. I didn't put a topic down. I wonder if they'll let me speak since I didn't put a topic down. Yeah, they'll change, they're gonna change the rules.
If you're wearing black and white on Monday, you can talk.
Yeah, yeah. You wore the wrong colors today. So the rules are you can't talk. Check out my shiny shoes. I love these new shiny shoes. Tell Regan she can't speak. Free speech is a threat to their corruption and lies. Boom, Deb Anderson wins the internet today. Yeah, you'll have to go watch Josh's video. Some guy at the bus stop, I'm assuming that guy at the bus stop is the one that called the cops. I think he called on Tina. Into the restaurant? Yeah, but he came over and talked to him and had some questions for him. Did you go file a complaint on that with how Todes acted? You know, I typically like Todes.
He did some things that I can't agree with. For example, because of the way he was acting, I made it to tell that they were trained to ask actual investigative questioning because to us, what's this, I mean, he didn't ask me, can I see your video, what happened? He asked, can I hear your son? Uh, well, this officer told us that.
He's a sergeant out there, that's Sergeant Todes.
I got his badge first, uh, education first. But he showed, when he talked, he said, do you wanna show me what happened? Which means he was trained by somebody on how to actually ask questions.
Yeah, he's no dummy, but I'm not certain that he was actually wanting to investigate so much as get your info. I don't think he knew exactly who you were. But you should go follow up with a complaint.
Tomorrow I'm gonna focus on, um, I'm actually gonna get a little bit of the fact that he knows how to ask questions. I'm not gonna give a crap about it.
I've never had a bad, well, I've never had a ordeal like that with Hume. He's typically been okay, but what he did was not okay.
Yeah, just take the word of your fellow officer that somebody has lawful reason to be arrested. You gotta actually do a investigation.
When was that? So he arrested you?
Yeah, he arrested me.
How long ago?
Last year on the 30th of August, at 8:19 in the morning.
Huh, right here at the civic center? Uh huh, because somebody told him to?
All right, good evening. I call a regular city council meeting to order. If you can, you're available, please stand for the person.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, if you can take the roll, please.
Mayor Proton Anderson. Member Newt, yeah, absolutely. Present, member Prang, present, member Russell, present, member Ward, member Wright?
Present.
Mayor Sierra. Let the record show, by the present, to your accident, accident, and member Ward, and Mayor Sierra.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item five, five A, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting from March 3rd, 2025. Do you have any, any other minutes to the minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Motion, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright, second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember President, number Prang. Please vote.
Mayor Proton Anderson.
Aye.
Member Newt, yeah.
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
The record show, five ayes.
And moving on to five, uh, agenda five B, minutes of the special city council meeting of March 10th, 2025. Any changes in these minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
We have to approve the minutes of March 10th, 2025.
Thank you, Councilmember Prang, the second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Russell, please vote.
Mayor Proton Anderson.
Aye.
Member Newt, yeah.
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
The record show, five ayes.
Thank you. Now moving on to six A, recognition of the Inglewood Holiday Store as senior of the crew of volunteers and workers from the holiday store here today. Inglewood City Council would like to recognize members of the Inglewood leadership team that organized the 2024 Inglewood Holiday Store. This group worked with over 200 volunteers and numerous local organizations, dedicated their time and energy to make this event a success. Since 2024, Inglewood Holiday Store provided more than 200 Inglewood families with affordable and memorable holiday shopping experience, serving for 700 children, and also purchased and wrapped over 1,500 subsidized gifts, ensuring that everyone had the opportunity to receive gifts. Congratulations and thank you to everyone who contributed to the success of the 2024 Holiday Store. We appreciate your time and dedication to the community and the work you do to make holidays season so much brighter for so many families in Inglewood.
Why are we clapping? Why are we clapping?
Is there anyone from the group that wanna make any comments? No, no pressure, it's not, I'm telling you, the agenda's not required, but you're welcome to. Okay, well, if I can invite, um, are we having a whole, a whole group, a whole group up here? We have a certificate, we'll hand to somebody and council will come forward and we'll get a photo.
I see, we're clapping in the future.
Free my speech?
No clapping.
What exactly are they being awarded for, for volunteer?
I don't know, for doing the holiday store. Where they make money, doing stuff. They do awards for.
Staking a picture.
Yeah? That's allowed. Way up, up and down.
All right, one more hand of applause, round of applause for the.
Oh, right on, yeah.
Now moving on to schedule public comment, before we do that, um, I should have figured this out before the meeting, but coming up, who is next for response? Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Prang will be providing response today. And we have, um, public, uh, let me do this here. This is an opportunity to address city council, there's an expectation, the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. Please limit your presentation time to three minutes. And we have four speakers scheduled for tonight. And our first speaker is Louis Johnson. Louis Johnson, you can forward.
You do get to go first because I've spoken with him last 90 days. I didn't even know I was fake clapping.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson, you can begin, um, when you are ready. Push the button on the thing to hide it. And we have the timer, is that ready, okay? All right, very good, you're ready to go?
Good evening, city, good evening, council members. My name is Luis Antonio Johnson, on behalf of the people. I'm a law-abiding citizen who actively exercises my constitutional rights. My father served in the United States Army, Special Forces, living by the motto, "De oppresso liberum", to free the oppressed. That belief was instilled inside me and is a part of the reason that I stand firm and exercise my rights. Friends that were fought for should not be treated as privileges. Since October of 2023, I face multiple retaliatory charges simply for open carry, which is my legal right. I filed complaints about police misconduct, but they were ignored for over a year. The delay in handling my complaints along with the lack of accountability is why I choose to post the videos of police wrongdoing. When I exposed that misconduct in the video, Ed Disney, the professional standards sergeant, threatened to sue me due to the backlash the department was receiving. The irony is that I have actually held in the apprehension of criminals in Inglewood. I am a good citizen. I simply choose to exercise my rights in a way that may be uncommon, but is entirely illegal. From my understanding, everyone on the council and at the police department has sworn up to the Constitution, which explicitly protects my right to keep their arms. Proverbs 28:16 states, "A ruler who lacks understanding is a core oppressor, but who hates unjust gaming will prolong his days." So my question is simple, will the council demand accountability from the police or will they continue allowing this blame until they issue the go-on check? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Louis here, can we have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Seeing none, thank you for your time.
Mr. Johnson?
Oh, we have a question for you, Mr. Johnson, if you wouldn't mind, going back to the mic.
Could you leave your contact information with the clerk, please? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our second speaker, Regan Benson.
Good evening, council, good to see you all here and present all jolly and ready to go. Wasn't that a nice presentation? The real constitutional upholder, right there, that guy. Young man, very proud of him. Nice job, young man. Super proud of that guy. So anyway, I hate to break it to him, because the answer is gonna be none, you care, nothing's gonna change. What's new? Hi, Chi Jackson, how you doing back there? So anyway, let's just give a little, so I happened to be in a parking lot a week ago, this past Friday, over at Chi's Fitness, I was driving through, and there were a couple cops backed into some parking spots, just hanging out, Friday, 5:30. I'm thinking, wow, something's really gonna go down here, I better hang out, see what I might be able to record. Because you should always record the actions of the police. Because they lie. And they help corrupt city council members, lie. Smile hard, Joe. So anyway, I was watching for like 20 minutes, and then another cop car came, and then another cop car came. I mean, it was only Friday at 5:30, what else could half of the department be doing in the Chi's parking lot? 20, 25 minutes later, up close this vehicle, it's a, it's a wrap, it's a, it's a company that does, uh, uh, energy drinks. She gets out all cute and stuff and pops her tags, and all them cops start unloading all of those energy drinks and start loading them up in their cop. And all them cops start unloading all of those energy drinks and start loading them up in their cop cars. How cute! I mean, they have such rough jobs. We can't expect them to not have some things like that out in public, right? And then to justify their existence, how do you think they told the story of why they were there? Because it's all on video, Chief Jackson. This is a leadership problem, talk down. One of those cops left and the other three went over to some kids parked in a minivan over by Wendy's, who obviously had an expired temp tent. And they hunkered the hell out of them for 20 minutes. What a perfect thing to be doing on Friday night in Inglewood, when people are potentially getting shot to death over on a coma street. This police department is a joke. Your response is a joke. Your new chief is a joke. Get it? They're a joke, Joe.
Thank you, Ms. Benson, your time is up, are there any questions for the council? Seeing none, thank you, our next speaker is Gary Kozak. Gary Kozak is an Inglewood resident here to speak regarding the Inglewood School Board. Welcome, Mr. Kozak, you can begin when you are ready.
Good evening, city council, it's kind hard to follow that. I'm going to start off by thanking Chief Harman for finally having great on the last day. And there was such a great response that even my neighbors called me and wanted me to thank the chief. So thank you, Chief, for helping the patrol. My ultimate deal here is to inform the city council that the Inglewood School Board knew nothing about the electric antennas on the, on the schools. Oh, well, but it was printed in your paper that this was decided a while back and a couple years before. But there's several, three members of that board that have been around longer than that, and they didn't know about it, so they tabled it. The city was never represented and they didn't have the facts behind them to present. And then they promised the board that they would get it through them within the next day. Well, my partner happens to be a school board member, he still hasn't got that information. They wanted a package deal. Oh, we got these great little signs, we're going to go do signs up here and we'll put these antennas with it. They did admit to the fact that they didn't have to have them on the public schools. So they went ahead and tabled that. So I know you've got enough for second reading, so you might want to consider taming that until the school board has some more discussion on it, which they will. Then the other thing on the water's done. I wanted to talk to him before he got out, before I got there. I've got several notices. They come down, they give a couple of our neighbors a notice that they're going to turn the water off, but they don't tell everybody. And some days they actually turn it off, but out of six times, four times, they didn't turn it off that day. And we've had people on our street, senior citizens and stuff, that are really in need to know that. So, and I can address it a little more to the water department. Lastly, you're talking about no bike lanes and stuff. I advise the city manager and the city council to take a look at code fast from the Capitol to East High School, where they're putting bike lanes in and eliminating all the parking. And go in there and just talk to some of the business owners and find out how much they're upset and how much business they're losing. Because you want to do the same thing here. The city manager and city attorney are trying to rewrite our, your procedure book and stuff like this. You don't want to listen to us because you shorten everything down to, we only have three minutes. Open your eyes, we'll take a look at your neighbors. We've got a lot to be really afraid of with our vandalism and shit going on. Thank you so much, council.
Thank you, Mr. Kozak, are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Doug Coen. Mr. Coen, good to see you again. Mr. Coen is an Inglewood resident here to speak about history.
Yes, good evening, council. Have you ever seen the toner poles along Santa Fe Drive just north of Bellevue, on the west side of Santa Fe? And to South of Indian Avenue? I've driven by there probably a thousand times and I've never stopped looking for them. Our history museum got a call from Aurora Public Radio asking us what's going on with the toner poles. And we, they wanted to tell that story on the radio. So we looked into it. The poles were created for a fellow named Don Cameron, who owned a city, city, cedar, I'm sorry, lumberyard on Evans and I-25. He came out to attract the customers. Ralph Gallagher was a well-known carpenter, made it for him. In the late 1970s, he moved from Evans down to South Windermere, near Bellevue. And the store closed in the early 1990s and he moved the, uh, the toner poles over to an industrial park that he owns. And they've been there since. He owns eight and a half acres of land on the north side of Big Dark Creek. And he would like to work with the city to create a Native American tribute park on a half acre, where, uh, uh, if he has a huge property. He would donate the, uh, the land to the city. He would move the toner poles. That public park would celebrate Native Americans. I have a map on the paper that shows kind of where it is. And he's created a little, a picnic table and a cover where Santa Fe Circle connects the land up that behind this shopping center. If you're interested in this opportunity, I'd give you his contact name and his email and his phone number. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coen, do we have any questions tonight, city council members? Seeing none, thanks so much for your time tonight, Mr. Coen. And that concludes public comment, unless there's anyone online, city clerk?
There's no one online.
Thank you. And I will let Member Crane get the responsible answer, she's right.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out to speak to us this evening. Mr. Johnson, thank you for being here this evening and taking the time to come out and speak to us and exercising your constitutional rights. Thank you for any service that you have provided to the city as far as helping us along in apprehending activity that shouldn't be happening. I appreciate you having mindfulness, um, in our city streets. Mr. Kozak, thank you for bringing forward the information about the school board. I think perhaps we should follow up with Mr. Kozak. We have, you know, the city has made promises to the school board for interaction to be provided. I'm just making sure that we've gotten, um, the information over there that was promised. And then, uh, I think similarly, someone could follow up with, with Mr. Kozak about the notices for water turnoffs. Uh, maybe you have some concerns, especially if we do have senior, um, members or residents that live in that area and, and, and people in general just are not receiving notices and water's actually being a problem. So thank you for bringing those issues to our attention, thank you, Mr. Kozak.
They can't even get water right here. You think they're going to get policing, right? No, shit's funny. Who?
Joe Johnson.
Joe Jefferson.
Yeah, he was talking about how there's not starting to be no business, and all I can think about is that scene from The Laura.
So that's that. Nicely done.
Very nice speech.
Absolutely.
Well, nobody could say you weren't being professional.
You didn't make Joe giggle like I did, though.
Hey, for effort.
Nobody can make Joe giggle like Regan can.
That's true.
That's why they don't want a camera up there. Dwight, what's happening? How are you? Good to see you. Yep, indeed. So, yeah. So part of the reason, um, I'm super busy is I'm working on lawsuits. And it's taken some time. And some other things are going down on top of that and it's just, uh, not been, uh, YouTube calling kinda a couple of months. And I think the next couple of months are probably going to be about the same. So... Well, this is with attorney help, of course. I don't file lawsuits. You don't win federal lawsuits going pro bono, sorry, you don't. And if anybody's got, uh, any examples of people winning pro bono federal lawsuits, uh, send them on over to me. Because, uh, I don't wish to, uh, waste $450 in multiple filing fee costs that will get me nowhere. But a dismissal. So... Josh, are you out, are you out? You headed out, working tonight or?
Nope, not working tonight. Painting my dad's garage lots in five weeks.
Right on.
Think that was good, though.
Yeah, I think that was really good.
Uh, yeah, it actually felt really good.
Yeah, Stacy, if you want to help, always record the Inglewood cops because you never know what they're up to. So, truly, I mean, no one, it's just, uh, that's why I just kinda... I'm just over it, right? 2025 is kind of that year that I said it was going to be like a holy shit show. Get ready, because just when you thought you had some things figured out, it's all going to change. And it is. And I'm not interested in being a part, being a one-man show of non-change. I'm just not, right?
Yep. Um, uh, if you want to, if you have time, we'll be there at one tomorrow at the PlayStation, me and DMA.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, me and DMA are going there.
Okay.
Both to complain about you.
Yeah, I can't wait to see how that goes, I'm sure he'll make a video.
I'll, I'll be videoing according to. Uh, I'm going to get dinner, so.
Okay, good to see you. Thank you for being here, really good to see you. Yeah, he also recorded a real important interaction this week, so... But I'm just kinda, I don't know. If people, you know, I'm not going to go out here and continue to just, uh, try to represent while the rest of the world is just sitting on their ass. I don't know, I mean, people can make their choices, that's fine, so can I. So, sure, if I see something, I'm going to say something as in record. But I'm just not making it a mission anymore to set myself up for false arrests, fighting with the government. I gotta get on with doing some other things in my golden years. So I do think you're going to be seeing less of me and, uh, I've said that before, I think I said that like last year. And I mean it this time, you haven't been seeing. And I haven't been involved in a lot of cases of, uh, some of my folks that are reaching out to me. And I'm just like, look, Denver's a mess, you're not going to get any housing. They're closing everything, Johnston's plan went to shit, he had to go testify in front of Congress. They're out of money, Denver's out of money, right? So you're going to start seeing all these people back out on the streets and I'm just, I can't do it. I told you it was going to get worse, it's not going to get better, it's going to get way worse. And so, you know, you reach a point where you do realize, you know, you can only help one person here and there from time to time. And if that presents, and I feel like it, and I have the time, then, then that's what I'll do. But other than that, I've had to cut some ties. For those of you that are wondering about Robert, who lost his foot over here in Inglewood, Robert is still in recuperative care. He is going to be transitioning and, um, unfortunately, I don't think I can be a part of it. He's going to transition into some long-term care. And, uh, it's too heart-wrenching for me at this juncture in my life. And, uh, I have to trust that I did what I could when I could. Uh, I checked into a few other things that I've been trying to tie up loose ends on and I've made amends with all of those loose ends and I gotta just be good with it. Because homeless outreach, it, uh, is bad for your health. I'm just going to leave it at that. And it's because of shitbags like this. And other shitbags who think that all homeless should be lumped in to one group of worthless human beings. And I can't deal with shitbags anymore. And I don't want to, uh, spend time in jail. Uh, you know, everybody's cheering y'all, "Go, Regan, go!" from behind the camera, behind their computers. YouTube is a, it, it's a very bizarre world, so that's why I've never become married to it, if you will. And so, drop me a line if you want to say hey or see what's going on, you can always email me, I get emails from you guys. But for now, I, uh, wanted to do this with this young man because this was something we started talking about many months ago and, uh, he's making really good progress and I don't even care what goes on with the city. I hope, I hope the whole building burns down. I, I just do, I hope, you know, most of the people get out. I, I, I don't know what else to say. I'm, I'm just sick of this shit. I'm sick of watching cops destroy lives. It's, it's, it's not a good thing to just immerse yourself in because there's no justice. The justice system is designed just us as it was, right? So I love all you good people, I do appreciate cheerleaders, I truly do. And many of you have been wonderful financial supporters. But it's just time, right, to just kinda move along, so that's what we're going to do. But you never know, when a, when a Regan Benson livestream might pop up, we'll see. I've been, I, I've got a lot of videos of these stupid Inglewood cops. I just, uh, roll by and, uh, pull over and whip out that camera. I wish everybody did it, you know? They wouldn't be getting away with a lot of the shit that they do. So, but nothing's going to change. This chief they have, he's a fucking moron. He's, he's here for nefarious reasons. He's not here, uh, because he left a law enforcement career of 28 years in Missouri to come to Inglewood, Colorado, to come to a shit show state that nobody can afford to live in. This fucking, you guys, this state, it's done. I'm just, we're just waiting for all the fires and explosions. It's, it's just... That's what we're at, so I'm going to leave it at that. Joy, thank you for being in here, Deb, thank you. No justice, no peace, fuck the police. Yes, we know where that little tune came from. Tune, tune, thank you, I really appreciate that. You know, they reach out to me if they need something and I can guide them to go get it. I, I, I'll always be there for them. And, uh, am I going to do it for them, am I going to be actively participating? No. I can't. I just can't. Thank you, Bohika. The whole country is dead. Yeah, things, things aren't good. Take care of yourselves, just do something nice for somebody, even if it is just yourself. But just remember, you know, spread peace, make love, not war. Bye, guys.